Right. South of Barnes. Or I mean, north of Barnes and in Barnes and.
On Oak Road. Which one are you talking about?
Co-.
No, we don't want that.
No. Oak Road to Millington Barnes.
Yeah.
West side of the road, I mean, sorry, east side of the road.
Down over. It's very sad.
Um, right. Okay, all right. Can we more of the Barnes, you do the Barnes or? Let's see, I'm on record.
Solitude.
You're reporting thing now.
Emery, can you reach that camera?
You said.
We need a tall person.
Sure.
Goodbye, Mary.
Well, that is a lovely shot of our little antenna thing.
Yeah, that's good, that's fine.
Yeah, it's all right with me too.
Just not adjusting.
Yeah, it takes a while, man.
Oh, it's not, yeah.
Well, gee, that's quite a minute.
You broke it. It's bad. We got it. Well, sorry, please. You're right.
Oh, I didn't say that way. Thank you. Well. Game of death, I was saying you need.
Right.
And.
Actually, it's a lot.
Would you end up? Fine, it's all welcome to. So. So.
Hmm.
One more. One more. Say my. Transfers a lot. All right, that's. That's my. Okay. What's the reason why you picked Nashville? Yeah, but I mean, there's. Obviously, they have insurance, she's open. Do you realize? You just like, we can actually.
I think someone. You don't give a.
We are planning on it. So was you guys direction to me? There we go. We're gonna be in the.
So when you get most of your income.
It would be Mike and I, my mom and dad, he and Tommy.
He goes down on first.
About Tommy and see.
Oh, we're so. Oh, good.
Been there.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
They'll take care of accommodations. To you, so. Great. Mom and dad buy food.
Now you just gotta pray for snow. It could or it couldn't be.
Right, I've been sort of down there and. Will take care of accommodations. To house.
And so Bill knows I'm trying.
Nice, okay. Well, we would. I'm sure. Meet you guys. Of course, if we went in three friend of slides, we're only about code. Certain path. Yes. For what?
Yep. Your parts.
And then the silver cat, it's very sweet.
Alvin texted me about. Ten minutes ago saying he has a concern with his daughter. And uh, he said, no, Matt Opperman. And say. Why? I said that. Alvin was gonna still try to make it. But. I don't know yet. So I had no warning.
It's like the three of you have to re-.
I know, and that's, um, I mean. I don't like this, you know. Yeah. It really puts a. You know, to have a forum. You know, it's like, I. We need to discuss it, right? I don't wanna have a pre-meeting, right? So.
Okay, great.
Why not? You've done it before. Said. I'm just messing with you, Ed.
They learn from their mistakes, so.
If I'm maybe a repeat man.
Bring it down. That potion.
Good.
When I get a.
So it is six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Um, right now, I'll do a roll call. Alvin. Not here, sorry. Uh, Alvin's not here. Fletcher?
Yes.
Is Zuckerman absent excuse?
I don't have information, uh.
Clinches.
So.
If they notify somebody, have a. So to get.
Supposedly, he, I heard it through Alvin.
You bring up from.
Hopefully, I'll be getting cleared up.
Fletcher? Here. Tarzelle?
Here.
So I'll ask you here. This week, we'll. Review the agenda. Does it have any? Corrections or changes to the agenda?
And if I could interject, do you guys have a copy of your constitution of bylaws? Do you know how your forum is defined?
Think we would have to have at least to review.
Free of mind.
I would just check your constitution bylaws to make sure that that's how it's defined. Sometimes it says the majority of our residents, and if that's gonna stop them.
That, well, actually. So what I think what I'd like to do. Is. Add to the agenda that we review if you have a form. If we're really just reviewing, you can call what I'm trying to do, yeah, no.
Okay, so what else? Talk on any lines?
Right, because I, I do have that same concern, that. But I don't, you know, right now, we're like reviewing the agenda, do we? Where's this point in time to do that, right? I mean, is it now, or, you know, do we add that to the agenda, cause it is me? Yes, new information to me as the last ten, that's right.
Sure.
So.
This township will.
So what I, again, what I was, what I'd like to do was I'd like to add to the agenda that our next topic be that we actually review. Our. Bylaws. Determine if we do have a quorum for tonight and can't continue the meeting.
Well, in this, I've been reviewing things, three out of five is a quorum. Now, if we vote and we don't have a majority, then you stop and take care of it when you have you.
But, I mean, I'm looking at, we're doing five. Let me show you, five. Ordinance amendments. And I think we need more input from the three that's on this board, that's my feeling. That, I mean, but, and I didn't know if we should put it on the agenda or speak to it here, or what.
Well, all, all of these have been discussed in several previous meetings. And what this is, is to approve the wording that we've already discussed, so there shouldn't be that much.
Um, but there's, there's some wordings that I've been concerned with, there's some wordings that we've. Had other people express concern with.
Those are the ones that we'll discuss and then it.
But I think if, if you. If you. Say you can pick and choose. That's wrong, either we feel we can do all of them, or we do none of them.
Right, either check business or you can't.
Right, if you can't, pick and choose.
There's no gray area.
There's no gray area there, that's my, I mean. That's the way I feel we should run it. So. I mean. I check it for one more time, see if Alvin's gonna be late, but I tried to test him one last time, we did. So.
They go to the board.
Uh.
They roll with the board, you guys, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm trying to make sure, cause you know, we're really, we don't have a spot for it, but review the agenda, that's a spot. To me, I, I'd say we were you reviewing the agenda. I mean.
Did you say you have our bylaws to know if it's a. Is there a majority or if it's just?
Just see if I am, we know.
Because total number of positions on board is five.
Is five, you together for.
Three, three voting numbers is your forum. So we could go through and review all of these and, and address us as they come up. And then depending on the vote, would depend on what happens.
But I'm, I'm looking at, we are making. Changes to our. Ordinances. And you have a double.
Quorum, three members of a five-member planning commission shall constitute a quorum for transacting business and taking official action for all matters. No official action of the planning commission may be taken without a quorum present. That's what your bylaws and constitution reads, so you have three, so you're good, I just wanna check.
Myself. I feel. That we are changing bylaws, which is a significant, I don't. That not having more members on the board is not doing this township.
But and if you look through the minutes, even just the minutes before us from last meeting, it shows where we went through and we voted. On all of these changes that are before us tonight.
So, so you make an emotion then that we continue with three out of five?
Yes, since a quorum is present, I knew that we. Uh, go forward with our meeting.
So that's, that's your motion?
Yes, but I just wanna clarify, you meant ordinances when you said to do a change.
I meant orders, yes.
Was my.
So when you have made a motion that we continue with only three. Of the five members were present. To update our ordinances.
Okay, that's.
I agree, yes, because the bylaws. A quorum is present and I move that we move forward with the meeting. Simple, move forward with the meeting.
So I can commit to read the rest of this for the.
Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Great, we have a motion, we have a second. Doyle, in favor?
Yes.
Mashkey, no. Lan?
Yes.
We do not have a. We do not have a majority. For that vote. So we are, we can't move forward.
What?
I voted no. You would have to have all three of us.
He voted no to move forward with the meeting.
Yes.
Even after all these months of discussion.
The money, we have the money.
All the money, yeah.
Look at the ads in the paper, and we paid for that as taxpayers.
We will have to replace.
The bylaws say that you are able to conduct business tonight, and if you don't conduct business, it'll be another.
We don't, this is not public comments.
I don't care, Ed. It's not my money, it's my money. I spent money for those ads. You don't make the decision, you're the one man making the call here, one, one guy.
Yes, because.
Violating all the ordinances.
We do have.
See enough.
You're violating our money.
Points to consider, we do have a forum, Ed. We would have to repost all these notices at the great expense that they are, believe me, they're getting expensive.
We are, we're making changes to our ordinances.
We are. The wording that was approved last month by this board. At previous meeting.
And comes to. And there's, and there's some wrong that I. You've actually, I reviewed the wording and I have concerns on.
Why didn't you speak up last month when we were?
Because I didn't have, I didn't, I didn't have the document in front of me.
Yes, you did.
You guys are missing the point, these are public hearing.
Yes.
Nobody's mentioned that.
Yeah.
I tried to. These, yeah, these are public hearings, bro, they're not just going over the wording.
I don't understand, that doesn't change.
I know, I know, but just so they realize that we're saying that, that these are public hearings on each of these five amendments.
And we need to vote on each one, that's right.
And they go upward, they do work down, that doesn't matter.
So just to be clear, I'm gonna reread this, so we're all on the same page, cause I should have read the second paragraph and I didn't. So your bylaws, no one has a copy of them, I'm assuming?
Right here, they are.
Just handing them to.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I, I asked you, you wanted me to read it, cause you didn't have a copy, so you. Did you not have the copy when I asked earlier? We found them after.
Oh, we had them.
Do you wanna read it then? What is it that makes you?
Yeah. It's letter E tracks about a quorum and letter F that explains your voting. Those would be the two that would be.
Yeah, these are the latest ones.
Paperwork will take care of itself.
Read them out loud about the voting, I don't.
Voting. Confirmation vote. Of the majority of the members of the planning commission is required. And approval of, to approve any part of the master plan. Or amendments to the master plan. Or amendment to the bylaws. Unless otherwise required by statute. Other actions. Or motions placed before the planning commission. May be. Adopted by a majority vote of the members present. And. And voting as long as a quorum is present. Voting shall be. Uh, shall be by voice vote. A roll call vote shall be required if. Requested by any planning commission board member. Or directed by the chairperson. Except in cases. To of conflict of interest. All planning commission members, including chairperson and ex. Office or members shall vote. On all. Orders.
So you only have to have a majority of the members.
Which we do.
Yeah.
Unless otherwise required by statute, oh, excuse me, for part of the master plan or amendments of the master plan or to amend these bylaws. So. There's nothing in your bylaws that recludes you from.
We're not amending the master plans. And one of these is simply. It was the one that got printed on, half was printed, there was no wording changes, there are things in here that we can do and finish up. To move forward. And in the meantime, the public has a chance to speak on each one of these issues. And I'm sure they have thoughts, because we've been talking about them for at least two months, maybe three. And we can take it on each individual. Topic with our vote.
We'll have to go through every topic, though.
Yes.
That's.
It's where you make the money.
You can, you want those really big.
So. I'd like to say, make another motion that we approve the agenda as written. And move forward with our meeting, since we have a majority of the board present.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion, another motion, we have a second. Fletcher?
Yes.
Tarzelle?
Yes.
Mashkey, yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Prove the meeting minutes, has everyone reviewed the meeting minutes? I have. Review previously, I didn't see any corrections. I'll make the motion that we accept the meeting minutes as, uh, presented.
And before we vote, I, well. I second that, but before we vote, I gotta comment, um. On the. I had gone to check to, I mean, putting the ordinances in the paper and what our policy was. Well, when I went through it, I found out in April of two thousand nineteen. The board at one meeting discussed it and at a second meeting approved it, but it never got written out as a policy form, it could not be found in the office. So, uh, based on what we found in those minutes. That from two thousand nineteen. Um, the board, township board will be reviewing that and getting it printed up in printed form. It did say the secretary. Writes it up and, and gives it to the clerk to put in the paper. But it was not written down anywhere. That was noted in the minutes here, so.
Any more discussion? Uh, we'll take a vote, Fletcher?
Yes.
Mashkey, yes. Tarzelle?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment.
Question your public comment on this year, then you can still speak at the. Uh, individual public hearings for the items?
Yes.
I'd like to see it.
Steve Lay, seventy-six hundred dollars, born and drive. As a public servant. You're here to serve the will of the people, taxpayers. And follow the rules, follow the ordinances, last month, it's too bad, there's a couple people not here tonight, cause I particularly would like to speak with both of those. Individuals, but I hope they would follow through and follow this meeting. The last month, a few weeks ago, on October twentieth, Mr. Dabitz, the chair typically of this commission. Uh, was pleading with the township board and complaining on twelve different potential plan accounts. Against this planning commission. That's on each of you, and I'm sure you're aware of that. Twelve counts, potential charges against each of you. Um, I'm not sure if it's because of incompetence or corruption or both. Um, but. Twelve counts of misfeasance, malfeasance, and non-feasance, and I know, Mr. Fletcher, you yourself know of several, you've been, uh, at least cognizant and working on it, I commend you for that, but in other words, performing lawful duties and preparing. In an improper way, not following required procedures or legal guidance. Committed an intentional act. Uh, outside the scope of a lawful authority, abusing power, or knowingly violating the law or ordinances. Non-feasance failing to act when there is a legal duty to do so, not following regulations or completing required potential steps. There's twelve counts, all evidenced by the Millington Township documents alone. Twelve counts, all evidenced by your records, meeting minutes, appeal decisions in this township, and or attorney correspondence. Over a ten-year period. Seems to be all true, and I don't know why you'd be up there pleading, it would seem to me that every person on this board has responsibilities, some more so than others. And, uh, you're guilty of it. Uh, taxpayers know it, you know it, the board knows it, legal counsel knows it. You're the ones that should try to fix it, guys. Gal, you're the ones that should try to fix it, I suggest that some of you save yourselves and the taxpayers. And this township for their embarrassment, maybe just resign. These twelve counts are over numerous different issues, taxpayer requests, a lot of different things, not just one thing. And, uh, that's only half of the story. We have at least three different open meeting act violations, only one charge to date has been filed, and the board hasn't acted on it yet. But only one, there's others, we have at least four conflicts of interest, uh, in this township, two of which are on this board. Two of which on this board are very clear violations of your own bylaws, very clear. And so, yeah, we have these charges, and I don't know why anyone would be up there pleading, because it all points one way, back to the planning commission. You know, the conflict of interest, uh, is, uh, Article sixteen says you're supposed to get a hearing, there was one charge filed on conflict of interest, the board still hasn't had the hearing. So until we have the hearing. You know, why file the other three? But Article sixteen says we're required. No, I have fifteen more seconds.
Oh, it took me that long to get it started, Steve.
Yeah, I know how long it takes to read through this, okay? And if you can't take it, get out of the kitchen. Short-term rental violation of home money, forty-sixty thousand dollars, that's my S.
Steve. Your public comment is over.
You're wasting more money, you almost wasted more tonight. Just do the business.
Thank you.
Stop me off.
Bob Ward, ninety-one hundred, shared a room.
Steve, you need to leave or what?
No, Ed, I'm fine.
Hey, then be quiet.
Okay, Ed. It's a real shame that incompetence apparently. Moved this meeting to Thursday than Monday. Whereas maybe you could have had five members to. Whereas maybe you could have had five members to discuss and vote and hear on important issues that are coming up tonight. There was a. When I came in the office asking what happened, why did the meeting get moved to Thursday? There was confusion on when the notices needed to be in the paper. Be at the paper, I'm sorry. My question was, cause I was told that they thought it was. The the paper were were supposed to receive it on Wednesday. And I said, what day does the paper come out? Wednesday, so you would. Get it to the paper on Wednesday to be delivered that day, that doesn't work. You guys had ample time. To make the process right, to get these into the paper, and you failed miserably. What a shame, what a shame that a simple act of sending the notices to the papers. Can't get completed, what a shame. Now, three people have gotta decide on these important issues with only two votes to pass it. What a shame that the incompetence to get this into the paper couldn't take place.
Uh, point of note, the me- the hearing papers were ready by Monday evening. So the secretary, I know that's where you're going with this, she was not the one that made the error. Errors happen because there's more than one person involved in this process. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just letting you know, these things were ready by Monday evening as soon as. Well, after our meeting the next morning. So it wasn't incompetence, it was a mistake.
You had three and a half weeks.
Any, any more public comment? I move that we close public comment. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Um, I move that we open the special public hearing. Uh, second.
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Let me catch up here.
I'm sure you may close the regular. Board meeting and open special use hearing. Okay, do you amend your motion to that?
Well, there was, there were two different motions, the first one was to close the. Planning Commission meeting. And that passed, and then the second was to open the special public hearing. And that passed. But we will have the special public hearing to amend. Township zoning ordinance section one fourteen point one one. Prohibited structures. To remove the phrase semi. Trailer, truck body or other motor vehicle body or similar items. Do we have public comment?
Yeah, it's a section change. They're reading number one and number two.
Number one, number two, and read what's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so. On the ordinance itself. She want me to speed to it?
Sure, it's on me, can I do it?
On July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the planning commission voted to recommend an amendment to section fourteen point eleven of the Millington Township zoning ordinance to remove certain language. And add new provisions regarding the use of semi-trailers, truck bodies or other motor vehicle bodies as structures. The phrase semi-trailer, truck body or other motor vehicle body or similar item currently contained in section fourteen point eleven. Would be removed, there would be a new section added subsection fourteen point eleven B. That would be added to read semi-trailers, truck bodies or other motor vehicle bodies or similar structures are allowable structures in all zoning districts except. Lake Residential and Mobile Home Park. So section fourteen point eleven prohibited structures would read in total. No bus camper, mobile home or manufactured home shall be placed on any property for use of the storage structure or other building purpose. This section shall not apply to manufactured homes which comply with sections fourteen point oh five or fourteen point oh nine and are used as single family dwellings. B, this section shall not apply to semi-trailers that are currently licensed for highway use and have a current Department of Transportation sticker. Semi-trailers, truck bodies or other motor vehicle bodies or similar structures are are allowable structures. In all zoning districts except Lake Residential and Mobile Home Park. Any questions on the ordinance amendment?
Open a public comment?
Just first thing, I'm not attacking anybody, please don't think it is. What a shame, is one administrator's gotta come up and explain to you guys what you're doing, holy cow. Thank you for doing that, Tammy, for straightening them out, but it's a shame that the board can't do that on their own. I think on this, you guys are missing the mark. When you want semi-trailers. Conex are a whole different ballgame to me, truck bodies. And you guys are gonna allow these in residential areas, let's look at the row of houses on Barnes Road between M fifteen. And former road, former road up to Village Limits. Uh, Millington Road from former road out to Irish, M fifteen going south here to. Barnes Road, Superville out here on Murphy Lake Road, and just come up with some word, houses are close together. Somebody's gonna pull a semi-trailer that is not roadworthy and park it ten feet off the neighbor's property line? Are you serious? How would you, you guys aren't looking further down the road, you guys know, probably know where I live, this isn't bothering me at all, I couldn't care less. I'm trying to look out for the township people because five, ten years down the road. These things are gonna be falling apart even further, and then what are you gonna do about that mess, let's look at the lowered tires in those semis. Are they salt brine? Is that considered a hazmat? Fluid? That tires are gonna rot and leak, you know, let's, you guys aren't looking at this. For a township good, you had one person that come in on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, ask permission. Don Paya, I believe his name was, according to your minutes. One person out of four thousand two hundred and one residents in the township. You guys are missing the mark on this, look ahead, look at what you're gonna put the zoning administrator, even probably won't be Tammy, who knows? But look ahead, what you're gonna put these through for blight. You, do you think people really want these things ten feet off her property line when you've got? Two hundred and foot or a hundred and fifty foot property? You know, what's? You guys just need to relook at this, I don't think you're doing justice to the township. You're here for safety, health and well-being of the township residents? Does that fall in that? Subjecting the the residential areas to that? I know, as you said, that there was no room on Murphy Lake for these, I differ with that. You know, there's lots out there that could take them. I've got a few more seconds. See, you're quite a clock watcher. There you go, well, you guys are just missing the mark on this, and I hope you do what's right for the township, you guys, I know it's gonna take two votes tonight. Instead of, because the meeting got moved. But you guys are, you guys are. You guys are missing the mark.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I'll go. Steve Lay, seventy-six hundred. No, I don't mind at all.
So just for clarification, to make sure that everyone has the same information, I would just like to direct the planning commission to look at section twelve point oh two. Section twelve point oh two is your table of area setback and height requirements. So, Mr. Worth is correct in that it would be a ten-foot setback on the side yard. If we are speaking of the R one zoning district. The residential zoning district, if we're speaking about agricultural residential. Um, or. The commercial district or the industrial district, any of the other districts outside of Lake Residential and R one, it's. Either a twenty-foot setback or higher on your side yard. So as you're making this decision and you're contemplating these things, I just wanted you to know in your ordinance where to look. For the, because these structures would be subject to this table of area setback and height requirements.
Tammy, I was referring to residential.
I just wanted to make sure they understood that.
You bet they don't know there's setbacks. Starting my class, Steve Lay, seventy-six hundred dollars, born and drive. I agree with what the former township supervisor stated as far as uh. You know, I have, uh, Murphy Lake, my wife and I, we have, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty acres, pretty secluded, when we first bought the property, had a couple of semis on. Ugly trailers, the wheels didn't turn, bees everywhere. But if I wanted them, I could have held them back in the woods, I still should have that option if I have thirty acres, nobody else can see it. So there's that thought, and I can kinda concur with what Mr. Worth just said there. But the other thing that really gets me is after I attended all these meetings for four and a half years, mostly off and on, but a lot of on the last two and a half. Is that much of this came about because of the Conex issue, and it was over uh, who had one, and somebody didn't like the fact that somebody had one, and so that's got brought up, and. Next thing you know, it's it's an issue. And then next thing you know, that thing's not even in the, on the list anymore, but now we're finally talking about semi-trailers. But I, my gosh, we don't wanna be pulled up filter ever, we do not want semi-trailers that are not used, that are froze up, that are uglier than sin. Sitting right by major roads or right next to somebody's property, cause every time you put an eyesore next to a a person's property. That detracts from their value. And you know it, I know it, and the taxpayers know it, and I think this is a bad proposal. Thank you.
So to be clear, convex containers falls under this ordinance as similar structures, that's why it's inclusive of this conversation. And we currently do have semi-trailers, truck bodies and convex containers throughout our township. So this isn't restricted to one person's request. This is an enforcement issue, your zoning administrator is unable to enforce because it's a longstanding practice of allowing these to exist.
Any other public comments? Henry?
Henry Close, seven-six-four-nine Osborne, um, just something real quick, I'm not saying huh, I'm for or against, cause I don't have a dog in the fight. But this uh, being on none in Lake Residential, I'm just saying that's a lawsuit waiting to be had because there is property that can support it.
Any other public comment? That, I make a motion to. Close. The special public hearing.
So close public comment. I move with public, close public comment.
Okay, I make a motion to call, close the public comment.
Second.
All favors say aye? Aye, all opposed, motion carried. I make a motion that we close the special public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. I make the motion that we open the planning commission meeting.
Second.
We have a second. All favors say aye? Aye, all opposed. Yep, motion carried, so let, we'll wait and get called up. Okay. So. The new business that we review is to amend the township zoning ordinance. Fourteen point one one. Prohibited structures to be moved. Uh, remove phrase semi-trailers, truck bodies and or motor vehicle bodies or similar items. So here. Any. And add the new subsections as. Tammy had presented in the. Ordinance amendment provided in our documents today. So any additional discussion?
Well, like Tammy mentioned, this is not. The the one request we got brought it to light a little more, and it is an enforcement nightmare if we. Don't change the ordinance to allow what has been allowed to happen by. The last twenty years worth of boards that the the semis came in and. Even though it was against the ordinance, it didn't get addressed, and there got to be more and more of them, now to go in and tell. Forty farmers and and others that you've gotta remove these, that's just not. Possible, and that's how we came to, that's part of the reason we came to this point, it's not just one request.
And as my concern was brought up when we were moving through this process. Was there's, there is a reason that. Those prohibited structures have been in our ordinance for many years. I look at. Adjoining um, townships have actually felt the exact same wording. So there is a reason for it, and again, that's where I had my objections in the past. So I still have those concerns that have been raised.
I think we all have similar concerns, but we did address some of it, that. If they become a blight problem, then that one particular trailer can be addressed. And could, you know, be cleaned up under the blight ordinance.
Yeah, and the thing was, when we actually were going through the uh. Conex containers. Where we had a very detailed um. Requirements that definitely the zoning administrator would have been able to enforce. Now it's, there's no real. You just, you just gotta meet the setback areas and you can set it anywhere on your property. So.
So that laundry list of items that you suggested for convex containers is not something that I feel I would have been able to enforce, that was.
Is this public comment?
No, that, and again, we voted on those line item by line item. And I still, I got a copy of them right here, so. And that's, that's my concern.
But do you have any suggestions for how you go out and you tell all these people that already have it because. Previous boards didn't enforce it under the same ordinance we're discussing. We can't go back and fix what didn't happen the last five, ten, twenty years. This is our way of meeting in the middle, is how I feel. Nobody wants them, but if they're gonna put them in there and there's some guidance, okay, it's gotta be in the back, it's gotta be off the lines. And. Now it it will be enforceable, where before.
I think it still would be enforceable, I mean, there, it's in black and white, you just gotta enforce our ordinances. We keep hearing, enforce your ordinances.
Do you have a way to do that?
That's what we, I mean.
You have a way to overcome the last fifteen, twenty years?
Start, start putting, you you basically start handling one after other, if they don't meet the ordinance, you address it.
Well, if it's a semi-truck trailer that doesn't have a license on it, it doesn't meet the ordinance.
So then they should be, it it should be addressed.
I'm not sure how you'd go about doing that, Ed.
Again, it's been my concern, I voiced my concern when we moved forward with this. Well, I voted that way then. So. Someone wanna make a motion to approve this ordinance as written, we can vote on it.
So we're doing this for future. Not to correct the past.
Yeah, how are we going to handle this in the future, I mean. If there's a blight problem, it can be handled. We would just have to handle it from a little different angle. But I don't know how you're gonna tell all these people, they're gonna have to move it off of their property, because.
I don't think we can.
I don't either, it's not enforceable. We have to make this. We have to make this workable. And that's what I feel. It it's not a perfect section. We can't go perfect after this many years of not being perfect. So we do what we can to make it workable. But you got to meet in the middle and this, in my mind, this is a good way to meet in the middle. It's been talked about. We looked at it from different angles. We're, we're not just picking something out of the sky. We really gave this some thought. And are trying to find a workable way. To make this part of.
And.
And it made this amendment work.
Well, I looked at it with what we put together with the. Original proposal for the Conex boxes. That had some good verbiage in it. But we threw that up and we all voted on it. It was the final version. And then we threw it out. That actually had some good stuff in it. It limited what people could do with them. It made them that they wouldn't become an eyesore. And that's not in this document, so. Again, I mean. Well, we can vote on it.
Well, you don't feel that if it becomes an eyesore, you don't address it under the blight problem?
Well, then why aren't we addressing them today under the blight problem?
Because I was told not to enforce anything unless a complaint was filed.
So.
And this has to go through. To help her.
So I mean, she, we, we got the same old blight ordinance today. So why can't we?
Blight ordinance just got passed and approved and accepted by the township and the county. So now she can start working better on.
So she should be on.
Yeah, only with a complaint. So if you see one that you don't like, you think this.
Somebody can write in complaint.
Somebody writes a complaint and then she will address it. And that's how.
Change your ordinance to address it then.
Yes, because she would have to tell them, you've got to haul that trailer out of there. This allows the trailer body to stay. But she does enforce it under the blight ordinance. That's what I'm saying. This is our middle ground. It's not going to be perfect either way to allow them everywhere or to allow them nowhere.
I just.
We had to find a middle ground.
What I, what I've done, right, with my research, I look at. This wording that we have is very common with multiple, multiple townships. In Tuscola County, our surrounding area, I don't understand why we're removing it.
You mean our old wording?
Our old wording.
Okay, are any of them enforcing it or are they even?
All Jews, I looked at their ordinance.
Okay, you're looking at their ordinance. You need to look at their enforcement. Which obviously they aren't doing either if those truck bodies are still sitting there so that you can see them. So I will make the motion. I move we accept the wording before us for section fourteen eleven as written. To amend the Millington Township zoning ordinance.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Motion dies. Okay. I move uh.
So what, are we going to give Tammy direction on what she starts?
Plan with this.
Yeah, what's your?
Motion died.
You've been directing her to start removing.
No, 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 you're not changing it today. So are you bringing it up at a lot speaking to further discuss it or what's the plan?
The motion, we have.
I don't understand.
I'm looking at Henry Close too. I mean, is it, yeah.
You might as well just come up here and run with me.
No, because you are.
Well, to be.
Public comments over. Public comments over.
I am not confined to public comment. Let's just clear that right now. Your zoning administrator.
So we, we basically, there was no motion made, the motion died. I make, I make a motion that we close. The planning commission, planning commission regular meeting.
Second.
All favor aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I move that we. Open special. Public hearing.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, so we are down to. Amend Millington. Township zoning ordinance. Fourteen point fourteen. Uh, moving a building. Manufacturing homes and others. Structures to update language regarding. Inspection. Tammy, do you want to walk through this since you put that back?
Fourteen C. This ordinance amendment is to replace obsolete language in section fourteen point fourteen C referencing registered building inspectors and certificates of code compliance with updated inspection and financial assurance procedures. Consistent with state law while maintaining the township's ability to ensure safety and structural integrity of relocating buildings and manufactured homes. So if you take a look at fourteen point fourteen C in the ordinance as it reads right now. You'll see that it references. Registered building inspectors and certificates of code compliance in order to move a building into our township. That's outdated language. Those things no longer exist in state law. Therefore, we have to make this move in order to facilitate the language that's in our ordinance. So the new language would read. In fourteen point fourteen C. In all other cases, building structures or used manufactured homes, the zoning administrator shall require a written inspection report. From a qualified inspector or inspection agency approved by the township. The report must describe the building's condition and identify any safety or structural issues. Before the inspection is assigned, the applicant shall provide an escrow deposit to cover inspection and administrative costs. Unused funds shall be refunded upon completion of the process. If the inspection report lists deficiencies, they must be corrected before the building structure or manufactured home is brought into the township. Instead of completing repairs first, the applicant may provide a performance bond, irrevocable letter of credit, certainly bond, or cash deposit with the township treasurer. In an amount covering the estimated cost of the required work. The zoning administrator shall receive written confirmation from the inspector that all deficiencies have been corrected before releasing any bond, letter of credit, certainly bond, or escrow funds. All other provisions of section fourteen point fourteen would remain unchanged. Any questions about the ordinance amendment?
I don't think I'm saying. Um, open public comment for this topic. In the public comment. Okay. I make a motion that we close public comment. For this item.
Second.
All favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um. Make a motion that we close the special public hearing.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Make a motion that we open the planning mission meeting.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You have any. Discussion on this. Additional discussion?
I think it's something that needs to be done. And I move that we accept the wording for us on amendment fourteen fourteen C of the Millington Township zoning ordinance. To remove old references of registered building inspectors and certificates of code compliance. And replace it with the updated inspection and and financial assurance procedures that are consistent with state law.
Second.
Discussion, um.
Senator, strike on the motion.
Yeah, the only thing that. Again, Tammy, I appreciate the work you've done on this, but but the only thing that I seen how we do amendments in the past where we strike out, show the old wording versus new. Um, I do like that better, but thank you for the work you've done enough to, you know, overturn anything here, but just making a note, okay? Um, without any other discussion? Um, both. Fletcher?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Nashky, yes.
True.
Motion carried. Okay. I move that we close the planning commission meeting.
Second.
Yeah, second.
It's second.
Um, motion and a second. All favors say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. The motion that we open the special public. Hearing.
Second.
You have a motion and second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And this one is for amending. Uh, Millington Township ordinance section fourteen point oh nine temporary dwellings. Tammy, you want to give us an update on this?
So you're going to hear me say the exact same thing when we get to the next ordinance amendment. So this is for fourteen point oh nine under temporary dwellings. But you're going to hear the same information when we get to fourteen point fifteen for recreational vehicles. This is a recommendation that was made by the Department of Health and Human Services with regards to recreational vehicles that are on property within the township. The Department of Health and Human Services has recommended that townships require written description of the method by which sanitary waste will be disposed of during the permitted period. Um, and that that information shall be provided by the applicant retained by the township. And so under fourteen point oh nine, letter A, it talks about. A zoning administrator may issue a permit for a temporary manufactured home or other structure to be occupied. For up to one year during the time that a permanent dwelling is being constructed. A temporary dwelling does not have to comply with the single-family dwelling standards contained in section fourteen point oh five. A temporary dwelling permit may be issued if the following requirements are complied with. And there are currently five requirements in that ordinance. This would amend that ordinance ordinance to add number six, which would be just as I described. It would read a written description of the method by which sanitary waste will be disposed of during the permitting period shall be provided by the applicant and retained by the township.
Um, I see, yeah, and then next. Under B, you actually have bold too, where you added to our ordinance, the applicant shall provide it readily.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, those are the only. Two updates. The, the wording that's not bold is actually word for word out of our existing. Ordinance.
That's correct. Yes, so in paragraph B, it says the same thing.
Yep.
Yes.
So. Not. We had discussion earlier. Meeting prior. And I'm just asking, you know. Maybe it was you had different wording in the next one. We wanted to make a comment.
We wanted to make them the same. So in fourteen fifteen, we actually changed, when we get there, we'll talk about that. We changed it to be the same.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Open up for a public comment. Public comment. Not. I move that we close public comment.
Second.
All favors say aye.
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 Close. Motion carried. Move that we close the special public hearing. We have a second.
Second.
Uh, we have a second. All favors. Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Okay, we will open the planning commission meeting. I make a motion to open the planning commission meeting.
Second.
Take a motion and second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay. New business is the amendment of the Millington Township zoning ordinance section fourteen point one four C. Do we have any additional discussion?
I think you got the ordinance number wrong.
Hmm, oh.
Fourteen fifteen.
Fourteen point oh five. One, yeah, I'm off.
Fourteen point oh nine.
Four nine. Right. Yep, sorry, thank you. Yes, so new business of reviewing zoning ordinance amendment for fourteen point oh nine, temporary dwellings. And fourteen point one five recreation.
That's the several. Two different ordinances. Were you doing them at the same time? Thought you were doing them a separate. My apologies, I only gave you fourteen point oh nine. I thought you had two separate hearing.
Oh.
Do you want me to give you the other one then?
Yep.
Do you want to reopen your public hearing?
Yeah, because we had a bullet in the other public hearing because they were very identical. Yes.
I thought you had them in.
No, they were, it was listed in the, so I make a motion that we. Close the. Um. Millington. Planning commission meeting. We have a second.
Seventh.
All favors say aye.
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 All opposed, motion. Carry. I make a motion that we reopen the. Um. Special public hearing. Or. To, to cover fourteen point one five recreational vehicles. To add the recommended in information from Tuscola County. We have a second.
Second.
Call favor.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Tammy, you want to go over that other one?
So I apologize, I thought I was only speaking to the one. So fourteen point oh nine is the ordinance for. Um, temporary dwellings while constructing your permanent home. Fourteen point fifteen is a different section of our ordinance. That governs um recreational vehicles deemed to include motorhomes, camping trailers, pickup campers, vans, buses, cargo trailers, and other units designed for use or human occupancy. In which do not meet the single-family dwelling standards of section fourteen point oh five. So motorhomes and campers, not including. Mobile homes may be stored on properties contained. Excuse me, can be stored on property containing an occupied single-family dwelling. Provided that the recreational vehicles are owned by the occupants of the single-family dwelling. And the number is limited to not more than two motorhomes or campers. Any such recreational vehicle may be occupied for a maximum one hundred and twenty days. Also. A maximum number of two recreational vehicles or boats may be stored or used on vacant properties for no more than ninety days per calendar year. In all of these scenarios. According to the recommendation of the Department of Health and Human Services. A written description of the method by which sanitary waste will be disposed of during the permitting period is to be provided by the applicant and retained by the township. So this section fourteen point fifteen explains the varying options for utilizing recreational vehicles and the time limits pertaining. In A, B, and C, we are going to add a letter D that adds that requirement for the waste removal.
Yeah, so again, all we're adding D, the wording in A, B, and C is identical, hopefully now.
That is correct.
Any public comment on this ordinance amendment? That I move that we close public comment.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. I move that we open the planning commission meeting.
Second.
There's a motion seconded. All favors. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, so. Under new business, we go first, we'll deal with these, we'll vote on these separately. Unless we want to vote on them at the same times, I mean. Well, this, like, it goes either way.
We could because all the wording in both of them are the same and they only have the same one sentence.
Yep. We have any additional discussion on these items?
I think you should vote on the subject.
I agree, that's just what I mean.
Any solid discussion for the ordinance amendment for. Fourteen point oh nine temporary dwelling. So any additional discussion? I'll make a motion that we. Amend. Millington Township ordinance. Fourteen point. Oh nine for temporary dwelling. To match the wording that was provided in the proposal to me.
Support.
All favor, uh, Doyle?
Yes.
Nashki, yes. Terzal?
Yes.
Motion carry. Move on to. Um. Amendment. Fourteen point one five recreational vehicle. Uh, to add recommended Tuscola County Health Department. Waste removal and. Information. Any additional discussion?
I move we accept the amendment before us for section fourteen point one five recreational. Vehicles. To add the recommended wording. Uh, of waste disposal for the recreational vehicles as required by the code.
I'll second that.
I would encourage you to amend that motion as required by the county, recommended by.
Recommended as recommended by the county.
I'll second that.
Grill apartment specifically.
Doyle? And vote?
Yes.
Mashki, yes. Terzal?
Yes.
Motion carry. Okay, I move that we close the planning commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carry. I make a motion that we. Open the special public hearing.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Call favor six five eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion care, motion. Prove. Okay, so this one is to amend the Millington Township ordinance section. Five point oh three J to correct the incorrect. Uh, citation from eighteen point oh three to eighteen point. Oh two. It is a clerical error of basically. The oh three should have been an oh two. Tammy, you want, Tammy Stunzer, do you want to give any additional? Insight on this?
No, I think you covered it. We, it was a clerical error that we discovered that. We're just making a correction.
Right, so all we should be changing in the ordinance is eighteen point. Oh three to point oh two, correct?
So paragraph actually reads a little differently, so I encourage you to read the paragraph as it is drafted. This is a recommendation from our attorney. It would read all coring and extractive activities shall comply with requirements of ordinance number eighteen point oh two. An ordinance regulating the coring of soil, sand, clay, gravel, or similar materials to protect public health, safety, and welfare as adopted by the Millington Township Board. Together with all applicable provisions of this zoning ordinance, including but not limited to. Article nineteen site plan review, article fourteen supplemental regulations, and article twenty one administration and enforcement. So that is additional language in this paragraph as it is currently drafted.
Okay. Any? Public comment on this? Yeah, not. I move that we close public comment for this topic.
Second.
All favor. If I'm missing aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carry. I move that we close the special public hearing.
Second.
The motion and seconded, all favors say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carry. I make a motion that we. Uh, open the planning commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded, all favors, since I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Okay, new business is the amendment. Uh, Millington Township ordinance section. Five point oh three J. To correct the incorrect. Uh, clear, clear. Change from eighteen point oh three to eighteen point oh two. Um. My discussion on this. And from the training that we just had the other week. It is very. Critical that we follow what. Was actually. Posted in the public hearing. The public hearing. Purpose. Public hearing. To amend Millington Township ordinance. Section. Five point oh three J to correct the incorrect. Citation from eighteen point oh three. Eighteen point oh two. That is what was put in the paper. And as we had learned in our training. We don't have the latitude when it's spelled out as specific in a public notice. To vote on anything else except that. Word. So. I feel as it is worded now. With extra wording that was not.
Yeah, for a second.
Yeah.
Confused, confused.
You mean the wording that the lawyer added?
The wording that the lawyer added was not noted in the. Notice. That we also was confirmed in our training from MTA the other week. That we don't have the latitude to vote on anything outside of what is actually. Put in the notice. So.
I don't believe that ever came up. And and I was not told to put that in the. In the notice.
The extra wording?
Yes.
Correct. I mean, that's, and that's what we voted on. In our meeting.
So to make sure that you guys know what you're talking about. Take a look at this. This is the language five oh three J. Here's your original language, so you can have them side by side to compare.
So if I was going to ask that this be changed. The. It should read the exact same wording that we have in our ordinance today. Additional requirements, all coring. Of soil comma, sand comma. Clay comma, gravel, or similar material is subject to requirements. In Millington Township ordinance eighteen dash oh three. Oh three should be lined out. And put in there in bold. Oh two. And ordinance regulated by the coring of sand. Coring of soil comma, sand comma, clay comma. Gravel comma, or similar materials. To protect the health and safety and welfare. So if this is up. Dated. To just have that wording that I. Played out. I should approve it, but I can't, I can't approve it with the wording that's in here because that wasn't put in the public aid. It was only to correct a clerical error. And we're doing more than correcting a clerical error here.
So you can vote to do that.
Any other discussion before I make a motion, or what's your thoughts?
I think we need to be as clear as we can be and getting it straight from the lawyer to would make it clear.
But then we are violating. The. The procedures of changing. Or amending an ordinance. Because that wording. Was not put in the public notice. And we, we don't have the right to go outside what was put in the public notice.
The old one in your hand. They say the same thing, just in a fancier way. And then it notes the, but not limited to article nineteen, which is in the ordinance. We're not adding anything new here. Site plan review fourteen. Other regulations in article twenty one. Do you want to approve that wording at a different meeting then? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying if. I could, I would make a motion that we. Use the wording. In our existing ordinance. And we just correct the clerical error. And don't change any other wording. Because that's what was. Posted in the public notice. And that was made very clear in our MTA training. Is. You, what you put in that notice is all you can vote on. Now, there's times you can put. In the notice. If you had a. A dimensional thing that you're going to vote on. You could say up to a certain level, so that if you wanted to reduce that in your meeting. Then you have the right to, because you gave that verbiage. That you had a little bit of transparency there, okay? But right now in our verbiage that we put in the publications. Black and white, all we're changing is eighteen point. Oh three to eighteen point oh two. So that's all we can actually approve.
So if you're finished, I'll take my documents back.
Any other this, this real discussion, discussion? Now, I'll make a motion for it.
I make a motion, we correct the clerical error. From eighteen oh three to eighteen oh two. In section five point oh three J.
Trying to think if we want to amend that a little more, I'm just thinking, Doyle, thank you, I'm.
You might just say that you want to limit. The amendment to only. Changing.
Yeah. We want to. Like the minute that we. Limit the amendment that has been presented. To only. Change.
The citation.
Citation.
Okay, move to correct the clerical error. By only changing the citation.
Yeah, eighteen point oh three to eighteen point oh two.
Question, say.
Do you want to include and leaving all of them? During the same?
That would be, yeah, that would be, that'd be basically replacing. Lookable ordinance section, Tammy, we can redraft that.
I'll just make that change before I send it to the county.
Can you forward a copy of that to us, Sam?
Sure, I want you.
Appreciate it. So we have amended motion. I'll second it. Or do we have a second?
No, we could be seconded.
Okay, I'll second.
That pleasure made the motion, so you said.
So it's okay, even though I amended it, that's okay.
So friendly amendment, yes, to agree.
Yes.
Doyle, yes?
Yes.
Mashki, yes? Terzal?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay.
One more.
Okay, so we are. I make a motion that we. Close the planning commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all favors, aye. All opposed, motion carry. I make a motion that we open the special. Public hearing. Do you have a second?
Support.
We have a motion and a second. All favor, aye. Aye, all opposed.
Dino.
Yep. So. The next one is for the. Public hearing is for amending. Millington Township zoning ordinance section nineteen point oh two. Tammy, you want to give us a?
Yep. So we're not actually making any changes in this ordinance amendment. This ordinance was amended. I don't have the exact date, but earlier this year, I'll say, to establish a thirty day filing deadline for an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. It went through the amendment process, it was voted, the county reviewed it. And when it came to publication, when the publication was printed, it was only the initial paragraph of nineteen oh two. In which the thirty day filing deadline was added, that was included in that final publication. Underneath that, numbers one, two, three, letters A, four, five, six, and seven, as well as that final paragraph. All of which pertains to the escrow account was not included in the final publication. Uh, when that was discovered, the attorney suggested that we bring it back through the process. Just to ensure that. All of the rest of the language remains intact. Any questions?
Yeah, so the. What you're proposing is the only wording that we are changing.
We're not changing any wording.
We're not changing.
We just need to publish the whole thing.
Right.
Right.
It was never the intent to exclude the escrow account information, but that was inadvertently. Excluded in the final publication after the amendment should include the thirty day filing deadline. So in order to ensure that that language for the escrow remains intact, it had to be put back through the process. So this is just essentially a formality to correct that clerical error in the final publications.
So you're saying, yeah. We don't even have to approve the thirty day. If that's been done.
Right.
Okay, I guess, yeah. We're just reapproving the, the whole.
I would say that you are affirming the intent to maintain the escrow language in nineteen point oh two appeals.
Okay.
Because there was never the intent to remove that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it appeared as that we, I mean, that we removed it because that's how it was published.
That's how it was published. Well, that was an error, that was the intent.
Right.
So the planning commission's job today is simply to affirm. That we want to maintain the escrow language that is contained within section nineteen point oh two. So that when this is published now, it's published in its entirety. Any other questions?
No. Okay, uh, we'll put up public comment on this topic, for the public comment. I move that we close. Public comment.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all favors, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carry. I move that we close the special public hearing.
Second.
You know, motion and second. All favors, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. I move that we. Open the planning commission meeting. We open it.
Second.
There was motion and second, all favors, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Okay. So under new business.
Number, what, ten?
Yes.
Okay. It's hard to keep up here.
We have any additional discussion on. Zoning ordinance. Nineteen point oh two. With that.
I'll make the motion that we accept the wording before us. To amend section nineteen oh two of the Millington Town, well, to reinforce the.
To.
Section nineteen oh two of Millington Township ordinance to clarify the appeals process. Establish the thirty-day deadline and retain the escrow provisions.
Second.
We have a. Motion. And second. Any additional discussion? Move on, oh, Fletcher?
Yes.
Mashki, yes?
Yes.
Motion carry. Old business, we don't have any additional old business identified. Um. The next item is Millington Township zoning administrator report. Um, Tammy, I reviewed it a little bit, um, quickly. In the report, though, for two thousand and, uh, twenty-five, there's only like three. What's their clothes, are you taking them off that?
If you have an electronic document, do you have access to local documents?
Oh, they're probably just hidden.
I close it when, like, I close the column.
Oh, okay, that's fine, I didn't open it up and, you know, I just used it, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So. I do have, under the zoning administrator's report, I did wanna just bring to the planning commissioners' attention. That we do need to revisit our sign ordinance. Back in December of two thousand and twenty-four, our attorneys advised us to. Amend the signed ordinance to comply. Um, with constitutional rights that were affirmed in. U S Supreme Court Reed versus Town of Gilbert in two thousand and fifteen. Um, it was suggested to me that I have. Uh. Wade and Trim, look at that. So I did send that to Wade and Trim for an estimate on having them revise that ordinance for us to draft us an amendment. And that was. Now I have to go back and remember what that was, but I think it was like seven thousand five hundred dollars, like, it was a lot of money. To have them do that. Um, so. My thought was to send it to the MTA and see if MTA had any check, here it is. Excuse me, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is what the cost would, would be for them to do that. So my suggestion was to, um, send it to, big difference, sorry. Um, was to, I remembered the seven, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is what the cost was for them to, uh, to draft us an amendment. My thought was to send it to MTA and see if they had any prototype language, I just wanted to. Send that, ask the planning commission what you thought of that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if I wanna get the MTA's wording on it, you, you know, we have it put on the.
I don't know if they have wording or not, but I thought it would might be, before we spend seventeen hundred dollars, I thought it might be worth asking if there was prototype language that we could use.
So I would, what I would like to do, since we are a partial board tonight, is. We had it as new business for our next meeting. And you, you know, I mean, not saying don't research it, you know, but see what you come up with between now and.
Bring it to you at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so that was something that we had addressed December two thousand and twenty-four, haven't revisited, so we need to revisit that.
Okay. Um. Let's make sure the permits, the blanks, and zoning administrator report. Next planning commission meeting.
Should we, did everybody get the memo from Tammy earlier, and does anybody have any questions on that? Regarding the differences of site plan. Reclamation and planned unit developments and the differences between them.
So that memo was sent to the board and the planning commission chair was carbon copied, so I don't know if he.
I have not seen it, I, I have not seen it.
Uh, should we talk about that next month then?
Yes, we.
It's just a clarification, but it makes it much easier and.
Was, yeah, maybe add it to your notes to put it on the next one, cause that reminds me when I do the agenda too, you know.
So we got signs and clarification.
Yeah. So. Tentatively. Our next meeting would be. If you wanna see tentatively based on the official meeting, right? December eighth. Any other topics to review? I, the motion that we adjourned.
Second.
All favor, aye, motion carry, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.